Like to call Village Board of Trustees to order Monday, November 16th. Due to a state of emergency related to COVID-19, the village may have limited seating at the board meeting. In addition to the board meeting being available on cable channel 980, you're also able to dial in and listen to speak through the phone. If you would like to call in, please call 920-322-6120 between 5:45 and 5:55 on the day of the meeting. Audience members are requested to sign in on the sheet provided at the registration table. Citizens wishing to be heard on the topics not listed on the agenda may speak under item C. Citizens may be given an opportunity to speak during discussion of items listed on the agenda and are allowed three minutes for comments. Disruptive discussion or profanity will not be allowed. Roll call of officers.
Duffy.
Here.
Morning.
Here.
Strier.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Will.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, seeing no citizen participation announcements, any announcements? Chuck?
I guess I'd like to congratulate Nick, Lori, staff, and poll workers for a great job that they did on the election on that Tuesday. Everything ran extremely smooth and I think congratulations are due.
Nice job.
Yep, thank you.
Was that record turnout, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think 16 was probably the closest, I would guess. I mean, I didn't look back a long ways, but yeah, we were just a couple hundred over 2016 presidential. But I would add to that, too, and it went very smoothly. And you know, I don't do a lot. It's a lot of the workers and Lori does a lot of that work and then all the poll workers. And we have a lot of poll workers that have been with us for a long time. And Chuck, obviously being there, that's done that for quite some time as a clerk also. So I think I was over there throughout the day. Longest wait, I think I put that in my report, that I know of, was right away in the morning because there was 50 or 60 people in line before the doors opened. It was about 25-minute wait. Other than that, you know, at the most five minutes throughout the day. So very, very smooth, great turnout, no issues. So yeah, great job.
Good. And you had some new folks that stepped up this year? Or were you guys worried about the poll workers?
There were a couple newer ones. We had some students there as well. I should have thanked them as well because they always add a little flair to the meeting and everything else. And so it was good.
So is their first time through the process? What'd they think of that?
No be complained. You know, I think it's definitely a learning experience, you know, to make sure. And you know, when we were doing the in-person voting as well, people were asking, well, what happens to this ballot now? You know, they wanted to make sure, you know, it went to the vault and that morning it's brought over there. So I mean, some good questions.
Hopefully, they share that with, you know, some of the folks their age. So give them a little, you know, what's going on over there. So yeah, yeah, thanks again for everybody's participation. And know Chuck, you've been doing that for a long time in your capacity as administrator and as a trustee. So yeah, thanks to everybody. That's always a good thing. Anything else? Any other announcements? All right. Moving down to administrative. Number one, discussion on possible action on setting a tax levy for fiscal year 2021 and review of the 2021 budget.
All right. I put this on here, obviously, prior to public hearing, kind of our last chance here to make any adjustments, review everything before the public hearing for the final adoption resolution of this budget for 2021. It's been a long process, I know. So it's, I think, all together with all the departments and everybody putting their time. And we've come to a fiscally responsible budget that I think everybody can handle, so to speak, and that, you know, everybody's, we're still providing the same level of service. I want to go through just a few things here, what I provided to you in the packet and I had a mail to your house, but they're sent to your house. So the first would be the publication. And really, that's page number three of your packet on the bottom. The really, the main thing we kind of focused in on this whole thing was down at the bottom, the local tax rate of that $9.14. And after discussions last meeting, if you recall, we had that at $9.24, which was about a 1% increase. The board wanted to see if we could make that work as a 0% rate increase, which is what we proposed here tonight. So you'll see that that local rate doesn't change. It's $9.14. This year, it's $9.14 for the 2021 budget. That does include about a 0.85% levy increase because of our assessed value going up. So the tax rate stays the same. However, it is, it does provide a little bit of increase to the tax levy, about $13,000. So it's not a flat levy amount. With that being said, the bottom number there, we still don't know for sure where that's going to come in because we're still waiting on one jurisdiction. We probably, we may have got that later today. I don't know. But that would be the counties that we're still waiting on. And it's not that we're waiting on it. It's just the timing of it. Once we get that entered, that'll affect that rate on the bottom. And it's possible, even though I know that county's was pretty flat, generally speaking, when our equalized value increases, which it did, the county's portion increases. So I could raise it a little bit, but seeing where we're at right now, I think we're going to be, definitely be, you know, it's not going to be any greater than a 2% overall, I would guess. So that's the publication and the new number there. Does anybody have any questions on that? Then flipping to the next page would be the summary. This is kind of the document we've really been focusing on. So the net change from what we discussed last week to this, or two weeks ago, I'm sorry. The net change really, before our budget, if we take out the contingency and the expenditure restraint and the use of fund balance, we were about $5,000 in the positive overall. With making the changes, so there's two changes we made. We lowered our tax rate to 0% tax rate increase. That was a net change of about, I'm sorry, I have it in front of me here somewhere, $16,000, 16,355. That's how much that decreased our revenues. And then what I also had asked the board about is moving to a 2% increase for cost of living for all employees. And that increased expenses by about $9,000. So net change, $25,573 overall. What that does is in front of you, what you're looking at, if you do the math with the expenditure restraint and the contingency, this budget that you're looking at is about a $20,000 in the negative. But knowing how our budgets typically run, last year, 264,000 or 254,000 that we saved, knowing that we're not fully staffed right now and knowing that we won't be fully staffed all year, we're very comfortable with that, as we discussed last week, last meeting. So that's the difference. Just so everyone's aware, this budget does include a negative $20,000 we balance with fund balance. And knowing that we likely will not have to use that fund balance because we'll save it in personnel at some point throughout the year.
What's that restraint?
Expenditure restraint?
Yeah, what's that?
Okay, so if you look on the first section of revenue on the top, you see use of fund balance. So that $173,000, that's the revenue side of it. But the expenditure restraint increase to the expenses is called contingency. So if you go down on the expenses, about the sixth or seventh line down, you see contingency. Down, go down to the bottom of the page, Mike, where it says expenses.
Oh, way down here.
Contingency. So that 153, that increases our expenses to right up to that point where we're just below the threshold. And then we balance the budget with that fund balance up top.
Where's it credited on the revenue?
The fund balance.
The fund, it's in the fund balance?
Yes. So if you, so that's the easiest way to look at what this budget really means is take those two numbers and subtract one from the other. Now give you that $20,000 I was speaking of.
Yeah. What was that restraint?
$46,000. And that's in here already as revenue. Yep.
Yep.
Any questions on that? Okay. Moving on, the pie graph. So the question was brought up by Mr. Trustee Will last meeting about, it just didn't look right. And I agreed at the time. I didn't have the numbers in front of me. And it wasn't right. So what happened was is the numbers were all right in a sense. The details were right. It's just that the overall picture really wasn't painted correctly. So what I was doing, or the way our budget is set up basically is we have $1.57 million of tax revenue, right? That's how much our levy amount is. We also have another $2 million of revenue from other sources. But what we're really zeroing in on for this graph is that 1.57 million of tax levy, right? So what I was doing, the way our budget is set up is it takes that 1.57 million and it subtracts out our fund balance, or our debt service, which is $650,000. It subtracts out the library, $150,000. It subtracts out the EMS, $150,000 that we give. And what you're left with, and then the debt service and all that, what you're left with is about $600-some thousand. I was using that, or the budget really uses that and says, this is what's left over for the rest of the departments. So that's how it was being calculated. In reality, it wasn't painting the right picture. So what I did is I went back in and redid that graph based on the $3.6 million whole budget and divided it out accordingly to everybody's budget percentage and then applied it back to the 1.57 million. So it definitely was not being portrayed correctly. This is really the more, the better picture. And some departments like this new graph and some departments don't like this new graph. But this is really what it should look like. And if you notice, last year's $76.17 is now the same because we went back to that 0% per month. So. So, good catch, Mike. It definitely was one of those things that kind of was like, you know, the most obvious part of it, I overlooked. So I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Questions on that? With that, I guess that kind of concludes our discussions about the budget. If everybody's board is good with where we're at with that and the 0%, and the way it was presented here tonight, that was, that is what is in the resolution currently.
Anybody have any other questions on the budget for this year with the changes?
I will note, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. Trustee Will also brought up another thing over the weekend on your summary page. Underneath the revenue, there's the capital section. It's, well, it's about halfway down the first page. It says capital, Fund 401 Capital Project. If you look at current actual, it's actually more than the estimated actual. That number was referencing 2019 instead of 2020. So that number is actually 345810. If you just want to jot that in there. Once we, this is all completed, I just wanted to make sure we got the final numbers in here. I will reprint this section for everyone. But that 844272 should actually be 345810. Really doesn't affect anything for the budget. It was just the estimated actual. So.
All right.
That's all I have.
All right. Any questions for Nick regarding this item? All right. Seeing none, we'll move down to public hearings. All right. We are going to adjourn to public hearing, adopting Resolution 12-2020, approving the general operating debt service fund, capital projects fund, spillman library, outdoor rec EMS fund, and tax increment district one and two CDA budgets, and setting the tax levy for fiscal year 2021. Is there anybody that has any comments on adopting Resolution 12-2020? Is there anybody that has any comments on adopting Resolution 12-2020? And for a third time, is there anybody that has any questions or comments regarding adopting Resolution 12-2020 for the general operating budget for fiscal year 2021? All right. Seeing none, we'll adjourn from the public hearing down to item number two, where we will adjourn to public hearing again for adopting ordinance 2020-07 and ordinance annexing territory to the village of North Fana Lake, Wisconsin for W 6702 Winnebago Street. What is that new address for that, Nick? Is that dress change? I forget?
Yeah, it'll, I don't know off the top of my head. It's not official yet.
But yeah, they lose that number out there?
Three something.
Okay. Yeah, no, no big deal. All right. Is there anybody that has any comments on adopting ordinance 2020-7? Second time, any questions or comments from the audience adopting ordinance 2020-07? And for a third time, is there anyone that has any comments adopting ordinance 2020-07? All right. Seeing none, we'll adjourn from the public hearing. All right. Moving down to President's Business and Staff Reports. Do you have anything for the library, Nick? Okay. Administrator Nick?
Thank you. You know, I can just, I was going to talk about the election a little bit. We kind of covered that already in announcements. But once again, just thanks to everybody involved with the election. It did go very well. We're still waiting to hear if we have to do a recount. So if we have to do a recount, we don't necessarily, we're not in charge of it. The county is. We would, they're asking for people to work that recount from our jurisdiction poll workers. And then also, one of us, Lori or I, or one of our chief inspectors would have to be present at all times when they're counting our. So we don't know yet for sure. I think we'll know for sure Wednesday. But if it does happen, it would be all next week. Also, just an update on the roster recovery. I don't know if I reported that the last time. I did finalize all of those, the $84,000 is what the village was allotted for the routes recovery grant. We did put in the, for all $84,000. I don't have like an official document saying that it was approved. I have no reason to question that it wouldn't be approved. So that was taken care of. It was, it was actually a little bit easier for us to claim that money, so to speak, from a reporting standpoint, because it's late in the game. They changed the rules as far as what could be claimed for police department and fire department wages and made it a little bit easier for our reporting portion of it. We still did a lot of the building upgrades and working on some of those yet. So other than that, it's just, as I was talking a little bit before the meeting, it's kind of, I won't say it's slow, but it slowed down a little bit. It was very, very, very busy in our front office with absentee voting for a number of weeks and the election. And it's nice to have a little bit of time to just take a breath and get a little vacation sprinkled in for some of our employees. So pretty soon, all this, the changes to the building will start happening with Kiva's entry and that. And we'll have a little bit better system than what we have currently. So that's about all I have.
All right. Thank you, Nick. Police Department, Darren?
Thank you. Obviously, the biggest thing for us right now is winter parking went into effect yesterday. So just want to remind everybody how that works. Runs November 15th through March 15th of next year. We run the even odd system. So from 8:00 PM on an even calendar date, so today is the 16th, an even calendar date. So 8:00 PM tonight till 8:00 AM tomorrow morning, any on-street parking has to be on the side of the street with even numbered addresses. And then likewise, on an odd number, an odd calendar date, from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, you park on the side of the street with odd number addresses. Want to remind everybody that it is in effect and we do enforce it regardless of whether or not there's snow on the ground, regardless of whether or not we're expecting any snow. The reason that we do that is because we're trying to build habits so that when the snow does fly, people are already used to it. And we don't have the people that, oh, I forgot to check the weather before I went to bed, kind of a thing. So right now, we are just putting reminder notices on the cars. We have not started ticketing anybody. Our plan is to continue to do that for a little while here, just to try to remind people, get everybody in the habit. Like I said, we just want to build good habits and make sure that when we need them to be off the street or on a particular side of the street, they are. This past week, we were able to get out and do our annual fall firearms training, which is kind of nice considering the whole COVID and how that's really screwed things up for us. But we were able to get the entire department out. And for the first time, we used the Fana Lake County Sheriff's Department's brand-new range at their county building out on Hickory Street. Fantastic facility, much more convenient for us. We used to drive all the way out to Waupun to do the training, and this is a lot closer, a lot easier for us. So we're grateful to them for sharing that facility with us. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Darren.
Good question. Does the county charger use it?
No, they do not. The only thing that we had to do is we had to get, provide them with information from our insurance carrier that says that they will take us on for any insurance claims if there's any issues that occur out there. And they don't charge us anything for using it.
Great. Thank you.
All right. We're down to Fire EMS. Jake?
Thank you. Continue to meet every Tuesday morning to discuss COVID with the EOC group. Right now, we're working on a phase one essentially of vaccinations, and we're in the planning process of that. What I've been working on is getting information from each department in the county on how many members they have and what their capabilities are essentially, and if they're in direct contact with the public or not. So that's taken up quite a bit of time. Tomorrow, DHS is holding a webinar that is hopefully going to thoroughly explain what the recommendations or requirements are for healthcare providers and in correlation with the vaccine, if we have to get it or not, and what the process is going to be through them. Other than that, Van Dyne has had quite a few fires here in the last couple of weeks. So far in November, we've gone to 60 different incidents. So we've stayed quite busy. And a couple reminders, obviously with the weather coming up, the roads are going to start to get icy. So making sure that people have safety equipment in their vehicles in case of an accident. And then making sure your smoke detectors in your house are working and any space heaters or furnaces, so on and so forth, that you check and make sure that they are maintained and in safe places. That's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Jake.
Yep.
Public Works Department, Darren?
All right. Thanks, Mike. Crew's been busy the last week and today and tomorrow. They're finishing up some asphalt patching from some recent main breaks and some recent excavations that we've done. We've dug up and fixed a sewer lateral. We replaced a sewer lateral, and we had multiple main breaks. And then just last week, we dug up a water main that we noticed a wet spot in the street, dug that up, found that a old corp had come loose in the main. So we repaired that piece of water main. So we're going to finish up all the asphalt patching tomorrow because asphalt plants are done after tomorrow. So we won't be able to get any asphalt until next spring. We finished leaf and yard waste pickup today. Crew picked up bags for basically five weeks, and we have those at the, bags are all emptied. The piles are at the garage. We're currently looking for a new place to haul the leaves and yard waste to. Our prior place that we used to take it to is no longer able to take it. So if there's any farmers or anything that you know of that are looking for compost on their fields, have them contact me. And then lastly, we're just starting to start to change our equipment over to winter road maintenance and snow removal equipment. That's about what we've been up to.
Hey, Darren, the one that you capped on Florida Avenue, was that for like one of the lots that isn't built on yet, or?
A lot of what they used to do is put in services and water, water services and sewer laterals to planned lots. And then once the house gets built, if it doesn't line up correctly, they tap in a new one. That's what this was. It was one that was put in for future, and it just never got used.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Chuck?
One other thing I forgot to ask, Nick. Can you give us an update on well five?
I was just going to raise my flag. Well five, Beschott, and Pond Cleaning. Not well five. I wasn't going to talk about well five, but I will. Darren and I just met with R.A. Smith last Thursday, Friday, to discuss well five. We just did the, like, if you remember, the process was we pumped it. We tested it. We tested the water quality. We tested the capacity of the well. We just got those results and kind of reviewed them on Thursday. We don't have a lot of further details at this point. Just kind of coming up with a game plan at this point of, our goal right now is to allow, have the DNR at least allow us to use that well at some point in the future, whether that's two years from now or 10 years from now. It's too early to tell right now where exactly we'll end up. But we're in the process of, it tested fine. The radium limits were below, that's always a concern around here is radium. When they tested it, it was below the limit. But you never know what's going to happen after they're pumping it for a long time. So that's the update there. We're kind of in process right now. The update, I was going to also add to Darren's with Beschott Avenue, all of this sanitary and water is done. All of the homeowners are hooked up at this point. The contractor will be there tomorrow to start topsoiling the yard areas, the private areas. They're still working on the storm sewer, which is about a quarter done. There's a very, very large storm sewer that's being put in on Polk Street that goes to the creek. It goes all the way to Friendship Learning Center. There's a big culvert there that comes out, and there's a ditch. That whole section of metal culvert that's under the ground is kind of getting pretty rough shape. So we're replacing a section of it for this project and upsizing it a little bit. They'll get that done. By the end of the week, they should be pretty close to wrapping that project up. The contractor that's doing the road base has started today. They removed everything on a couple of the blocks. So what their process is, they'll remove all the old asphalt and all the old gravel and all the old curb and dirt and all that stuff. And then they'll put in the new gravel base. So that within the next week, week and a half, should almost all be wrapped up. So that's, go ahead. That's where Beschott is. Okay?
Yeah. I don't know if anybody walked by it, but there is a huge drainage, storms you put through there.
Yeah.
It's just huge.
That's the one I was, it's concrete elliptical. Yeah, it's.
Where's that headed to?
Well, that's what I was just saying. It goes to, it goes to, down Polk Street to the creek, right by where Minnesota and Polk Street wouldn't normally intersect. There's a, that's where it dumps into. And it picks up that ditch line with the apartments like south of Friendship Learning Center, those apartments. Behind those apartments, there's a big ditch that goes west across Prospect. All that water that comes off of, you know, west of the village comes through that pipe and into Mosher Creek. And over the years, as we know with farming practices and things, stormwater has, is kind of grown and, so to speak, the peaks have grown. So that pipe is undersized a little bit. So we're upgrading the size. Now, there's still a long stretch of it upstream of what we're doing right now that needs to be replaced in the next few years.
Nick, do they, do they take all the sidewalks out on Beschott before winter, or do they do that all in the spring?
They do. I think they're doing all that in the spring in this project. I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head right now. I have to ask Mitch. I can email you or let you know. Anything else on Beschott? The pond cleaning, we've talked about that for the CIP standpoint. It's a 50% grant match, if you recall. Came in a little bit higher than we had anticipated, if you recall. That project went very smoothly. I don't know if you read Mitch's weekly report, but they, it took them about a week, week and a half. They drained the pond down. They dug out. And I had a chance to go down there almost every morning before work. I would stop in there and just take a look at the progress. And there was, it was very obvious when I was explaining how these ponds capture that sediment. I mean, it was just, it was just three, four feet of muck, basically, for lack of a better term. And that's all the stuff that has come out of our stormwater over the years and didn't go into Lake Winnabege. So it does, it did its job. But it definitely needed to be cleaned. And they also overdug it a little bit. We talked to the DNR and we, prior to the project even starting, we plan on digging it down to get a little bit more capacity. Hopefully, we'll be a little bit more efficient, plus maybe we can buy a few more years out of it before we have to clean it again. But they finished that up. When we got that really heavy rain last week, they literally finished it up that day and turned the pumps on and filled the pond up within two hours. I mean, it was, the timing couldn't have been better. So worked out very well. They just kind of finished up some cleanup today, and that project's done. So we kind of lucked out with the rain we've had this fall. So.
Nice. Chuck? Give you one final thing for you or Darren. We had talked about a leaf vacuum at one point.
Yep. December 7th, which I also wanted to mention, I put December 5th in my weekly report for our next meeting. It's December 7th. That'll be on the agenda, just a discussion about the leaf vacuum and making a decision on that. Yep.
Anything else?
It's not 7th, the following meeting.
Anything else, Nick?
I'm good.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? President's Business, all right. Moving down to consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the following village board meeting from November 2nd, 2020, and approve invoices and authorized checks to be drawn on the respective funds as indicated. General Fund, $94,018.94. Library Fund, $894.44. EMS Fund, $1,684.19. Capital Projects, $11,658.90. Water Department, $223,229.93. Waste Water Department, $202,087.54. Stormwater Fund, $62,018.62 for a grand total of $595,592.56. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I got a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. We got a motion by Will, second by Price, to approve the consent agenda as read. Are there any questions or comments?
I just have a good question. So the Beschott Avenue, I see you've paid some stuff already. Has that come in line with expectations with the quote, or were there any differences?
Well, if you recall, the bid was a little bit higher on certain portions of it. I don't have the numbers. We did review that when we approved it. But yes, as far as the process, the project compared to the bid, yes, it's been pretty good. But the bid itself was a little bit higher in some of the areas that we knew going into it that were going to be a little bit high.
I guess, can you elaborate on that?
Well, I don't have the numbers in front of me tonight, but we did, I, that would have been when we. have been when we approved the bid, the bid at that meeting.
Sure, I was just thinking relative to the bid, has it come in higher than the bid?
No, that's what I was saying. Relative to the bid, the project has gone well and it's, it's pretty much in line with the bid, is what I, I said that, I maybe didn't say it clearly.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Moving down to Administrative, number one, discussion and possible action and presentation of the village flag by the Optimus Club.
Yes, as we call, the village was willing to pay half and the Optimus was going to pay the other half. The police benevolent graciously stepped forward and said that they would take care of the village portion of that. So what I did is I then asked the Optimus Club to put a rendition of what the flag would look like. And this isn't exactly a flag, but it does show that in a sense, this is what would be on the flag. It'll be a three by five, a four by six. I, I have to ask Darren what would actually be on that, but it's what our business cards are, it's what our logo is and our stone and everything else, so it's gonna follow that same theme.
Nice.
Is that the color? The blue?
Yes, it'd be the colors that are, colors that are on the flag, yes.
Nice. All right. Well, I appreciate the Optimus Club and the Police Benevolent Association for stepping up for that, that'll be nice when we get that in there. Any questions for Chuck?
Chuck, were you looking for an approval of, of placement of that at the village, at the Yellowstone?
We can at some point, you know, the thoughts were that it'd be on Yellowstone Trail Park. We have two flag poles there right now, it's kinda behind that electrical panel as for the lights are shining up on it, would be, the third one probably offset between the two and step back if, that's what, I'm not sure if Darren had thought the same or not, but that's, I think would be a good place for it.
Is that something you wanna do tonight or you wanna do at a later date?
If we're willing to do it tonight, we can. I mean, it's something that won't happen till spring, so I think as long as we're talking about it, if somebody wants to, to approve something like that, that would be great.
Was the board's pleasure?
I'll make the motion to approve the new flag and, and allow it to be presented on the light pole by Yellowstone Park.
I'll second.
All right. Got a motion by Will, second by Duffy to approve the placement of the, the village flag by the Optimus Club in Yellowstone Trail Park. Any other questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
Uh, Resolutions, number one, discussion and possible action on Resolution 12-2020, a resolution approving the General Operating Debt Service Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Spillman Library Outdoor Rec EMS Fund and Tax Increment District Number One and Number Two CDA budgets and setting the, the tax levy for the fiscal year 2021. All right, we had discussion a little bit earlier, what is the board's pleasure on this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-12-2020.
And that's with the, the zero percent increase?
Zero percent increase to the tax rate.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. We got a motion by Horni and a second by Duffy to approve the Resolution 12-2020 to approve the fiscal year budget for 2021. Are there any questions or comments? Mike?
I guess I would like to go on the record, say thanks to the village staff and administration and the departments coming in with a zero percent. I know it's not easy. It's fiscally responsible, but it's also, I, I feel good about the taxpayers, their services have been somewhat limited this year with the pool and the library and administration office and, and some of the recreational stuff, so I thank everybody and I hope the taxpayers are happy. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, I'd like to echo that also and I don't know if any of the other board members wanted to make any comments regarding the budget process. All right, Chuck?
I know it's a long process, you know, I think Nick and staff is doing a great job in just the way they've presented it to the board and allowed us to take it piecemeal as to go through the process, so they did a nice job.
John?
Again, thanking staff to put us in this position to be able to do this. Sometimes, you know, down the road, you don't know what the future holds as far as financial backing, but they put this village in great position as, as did previous boards and administrations, put this village in a financially good position to be able to do this and still provide the services that we have. That's really what it's about, is making sure we can continue to provide the services we have and still be financially solvent. Thank you.
Well, I would just echo the sentiment of the board, just to thank you guys for all the hard work that you do and putting it all together. I know it's a lot of work. It takes a lot of time and, and I really appreciate it.
I know Nick likes the numbers, so I know it's one of his forte, so he probably enjoys a little bit weird, weirdly, but.
And I, I'll add it now too, I just think to all the departments has, especially, I know Chris, you know, she has, she has limited time here during the week and she, this time of the year for her is very challenging, so she has, every budget goes through her, but and all the department has and all the time they've put in and, and meeting with me and changing numbers and it is a long process. I do enjoy the numbers, the process is long though and, and it, it sometimes becomes trying and every year presents a different challenge and, you know, we have a good team here that's always up to the challenge and, and we've, you know, the board included. So I think, yeah, I think we can all go to bed tonight with knowing that we did our best at this budget and put together a very fiscally responsible budget, along with providing great services to our community. So thanks to all involved.
And also, it's nice when we get the audit, I mean, like over the years being on the board for as long as I have, how it's progressed like that and the work that you continue to do, they, they appreciate every year they're always saying, you know, that it's getting better and better, so that's, that's a big plus.
Sorry, I wanna add one more thing and to John's point of previous boards, previous administrators, and, and it is, you know, I feel like each budget's a sprint, but it is such a marathon. I mean, we have to be looking, you know, these CIP plans are five, 10 years out and those, those debt services are 10-year debt services, so it's, you have to do both parts of it and, and I think the village is in a very good financial position because of previous boards, previous administrators and the work that our department has have done over the years, so.
Well put. All right, is there any other comments regarding this item? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right, moving down to item K, ordinance. Discussion and possible action on ordinance 2020-07 and ordinance annexing territory to the village of North Fonalack, Wisconsin, W 6702 Winnebago Street. This is second reading, do we need to just get a little?
I can summarize it. There was unanimous annexation request by W 6702 Winnebago Street because of a failing septic system, I believe, and they wanted to annex into the village. It's surrounded by village property already, we did, you know, it was sent to the state. We did get approval from DOA recently, just late last week, our Department of Administration at DOA. And this would just add that, that one parcel to the village of North Fonalack and we already have allowed them to hook up to our sewer and water, they're currently hooked up to that and this is just the formal process, public hearing tonight and the adoption of the ordinance and then we would post, start posting it tomorrow and finish the process up.
So how many more properties we have out there that are?
I can think of two off the top of my head, I don't know if that's accurate, but two. Could be three.
Would they be allowed to like redo their, their well if they wanted to or does the DNR make them?
No, the DNR would allow that. And in some cases, they're allowed to redo their septic. You can't force them to, but in most cases financially, it probably, a lot of times it makes more sense to just hook up.
Right. Okay. All right. Well, thank you for the background.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do they get added to like, so this tax year, I mean, well, does it get added to us right away?
Yeah, as soon as it officially get added. I don't know the official date that the assessor puts them on the books and that they start paying our tax bills, but because we have a boundary agreement with the town of Fonalack, we, in some cases, if you don't have a boundary agreement, you have to pay taxes, there's a calculation you have to do to pay the taxes, but because we have a boundary agreement, we don't have to do that. But to answer your question, it's, it's relatively soon, I don't know what the exact